Hello, sorry for the delay. We had student representative interviews today and because Nathan is graduating this year. So we had, yeah. We appreciate you Nathan, but thank you for your patience. Okay, it is 5:07 PM. On Monday, May 22nd, 2023, this is the regular board meeting for the Monroe School District. Present are Director Barnes, Director Campbell, Director Ed Scorn, Director Whitfield, and Interim Superintendent Dr. Marcy Larson. Executive Cabinet and members of the school district staff as well as members of the community. I want to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting. We have updated the public comment process and forms. Public comment forms received after the meeting has started will be saved for the next scheduled meeting. Members of the public can log into the regular board meeting using the Zoom link on the Board Docs website. Please rise for the claudable agents.
As claudallegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to tonight's meeting. We are happy to have you join us. All comments during tonight's meeting are audio and video recorded. And will be available online on our website. This is in addition to the written minutes. While it may appear the board is moving quickly on important matters, there have been previous discussions. On these issues, either in earlier meetings or in board workshops, which are also open public meetings. Each director has had ample time to study the issues, ask appropriate questions and obtain satisfactory answers from the superintendent. Her staff or through outside research. Alright, it looks like we have no late added items to today's agenda. And moving on to agenda item 1.05, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move the Monroe School District. Go ahead, Chad. Sorry, go ahead. I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves the agenda dated May 22nd, 2023.
Second.
There's a motion on the second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves the agenda dated May 22nd, 2023. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed five to zero. Moving on to agenda item 2.01 Frank Wagner Office of System and School Improvement, Washington School Improvement Framework. And it looks like we have, we'll go and Deb presenting.
Good evening. That's really loud. It's a pleasure to be here tonight and we're going to talk about our SIP plan from 20223 and our SIP plan for 2324. So. Let Jesse give him a second to put in and present. So just to start us off, what a year. It's been kind of a roller coaster ride. I cannot believe we're already in May, end of June, coming into June. And so it feels good to be here, but it also feels overwhelming just to think about all the work that we have done and the work ahead of us. One of the things that we're really trying to put into place in our building is just the the front cover slide. You're going to see high levels of learning for all everywhere around the building. I need my parents, especially in the Frank Wagner community and my students to understand that learning is required at school. I mean, it's a big thing that I think we kind of took our foot off the gas during pandemic, which is totally understandable. But now being a title one building, I think we have even more work to do just to get us caught up with our peers at our sister elementary schools. It's not pressure that I put on the kids, but it is a message that I need my staff and my parent community to to understand. And so this is just a presentation of the work that we have that we've done this year and the work that we're going to head into this next year. So first, the Monroe commitments, something we really take to heart here in the building, powerful instruction, equitable access and high expectations. If we're going to have these three as pillars, I need them to be front center of the work that we're doing there in the building and not something that is just on our website. So we talk about these a lot in terms of what this means for our students. We're going to divide the presentation into two parts. I'm going to let Deb speak to 2223 and I will take over at 2324. And then at the end, we'll merge the two and talk about 2425 and then answer any questions that you guys have at the end.
So for the 2223 SIP data, we're going to remind you of our SIP goals. We will take a look at our data results and if we met our goals and if we even have the data yet to fully answer that question. And then we'll talk about our next steps.
And then for 23, did you say that? For, did you talk about 23? For 2324, I'm going to throw a new acronym at you guys. I don't know what WSIF stands for, so I'm just going to call it the WSIF framework. The only difference between the old SIP plan and the new one is we're going to talk about smarty goals and I'm going to tell you what that means and show you our examples and draft forms of those. We're going to do a data analysis of those goals and then why we chose those goals specifically and more importantly, the connection between this year's SIP plan and 2324s.
So in 2223, we've continued our emphasis around literacy. We specifically in the area of writing. Our goal, our whole school academic goal was to increase the percentage of students receiving writing and in recruit. Receiving proficient in writing instruction within the curriculum by 5%. We did this in K through two focusing really on phonics and the fundamental components of writing. And then third through fifth lifting it up to the focus on organization and elaboration. We wanted all students to demonstrate an increased mastery of standards and writing is measured by the SBA and the WIDA. And progress monitored at the building level by the I Ready, the BASS, ESGI and writing on demands. As you can see, SBA is still to be determined. We are actually in our second week. So they actually are taking the writing assessment tomorrow. So we don't have that data yet. We have high hopes. Our WIDA is again to be determined. We, I believe those those scores are rolling in now. But our I Ready shows a 28 increase in on or above grade level and that's winter to winter. We don't have our spring assessment yet and the FMP had a 17% increase in levels three and four. So at or above. Above grade level standard, again, winter to winter. Our subset academic goal was that Frank Wagner will increase the percentage of students receiving MLL support to reach proficiency. By by 5% and those identified as progressing by 5% as identified by the WIDA assessment. Again, I can't give you the results of that yet. The WIDA score should be in very soon. I hear they're rolling in now. But again, we also focused on progress monitoring throughout the year using our I Ready and Bass. The ESGI K through two and then our writing on demands K through five and.
Deb?
Yes.
Could I have you, as you're going through, can I have you talk about these acronyms?
Sure.
Doesn't know what those are.
Yep, absolutely.
I ready is a really important tool that I think the audience would.
Yeah, so.
Good understanding.
Yeah, absolutely. So SBA is our state testing. WIDA is the testing that we give our MLL students. I Ready is a program used throughout the district at all of the elementary schools. And it essentially what happens is our students take a diagnostic three times a year and then it puts them on an individualized lesson path. There is the ability for teachers to look at a child and say, okay, but I really want you to focus on. This particular skill or this particular standard and they can assign those lessons. But a lot of times the kids follow their individualized lesson path. It's it's a good tool for both intervention and enrichment. Bass is, you'll hear interchangeably with FMP and that's an independent running record. So basically that's where a teacher actually sits down one on one with a child. The child reads, we listen to them for fluency and accuracy in their reading. And then they have a discussion about what they read to gather data and comprehension. ESGI is not an assessment per se, but it's kind of, we were kind of trying to figure out how to describe this the other day. It's kind of the vessel that holds the assessments. So we put assessments in ESGI such as for kindergarten. Letter recognition or CVC words. And it go, the teacher goes through it with the students and that's how we gather that data. And then writing on demands are something that our teachers give at the beginning and end of every unit. So the children are giving up, given a prompt. It's very. Wide, generic sort of, you know, it's tell me a small moment story or. Tell me for nonfiction, it might be. Tell me what you know a lot. Tell me about something you know, write about something you know a lot about and. We give it at the beginning and that tells our teachers, okay, this is where our children are starting at. This is the baseline, but also this is. As we sort them, this is what students need to work on in small groups as well. And so it kind of guides instruction as well as gives that baseline. And then at the end, they take another on demand. It's the exact same prompt and that kind of shows us where students have have grown and also where we need to grow. That's good. So those are, those are what we use to progress monitor our goals. The 2223 equity base goal is that the number of students needing. The number of students identified as needing tier three instruction. In other words, students who. Were achieving two or more grade levels below where they should be. Will be cut in half as measured by the SBA and WIDA and progress monitored by I Ready, Bass, ESGI and writing on demands. As of September 20, September 22, 214 students were identified at Frank Wagner's needing tier three supports. As of right now, based on our I Ready, we have decreased that number by 16%. We had 214 students identified as tier three and now we have 180 identified as tier three.
Thanks, Deb. So now we're going to talk about the WSIF SIP plan. One of the things you're going to notice in our goals is that we've been really working with our team to try and really clean out, clean up the fluff, if you will. And so you'll see the 2324s draft goals. And again, I want to emphasize draft because this is ongoing work with our labor partners. And so our SAT and our building guiding coalition are going to have a say. We talked to them before this meeting. And we're going to continue to talk to them throughout the summer and August when we come back and hopefully have everything finalized when we hit school in September. But one of the things you're going to notice is that we really emphasized the goals answering what will be improved. By how much, by when and for whom and what? And so that's one of the things that we're really holding to as we're writing these goals, which is hard to do when we think about a smarty goal. So these are also smart eagles. The new acronym is going to be for specific measurable, attainable, realistic. Time bound and then the I and the E are for inclusive and equitable. And so that's a lot of the work that we have to do in the building. So the first school that we have is for our whole school academical. By June 2024, we're going to increase the percentage of total students who reach proficiency. On the math SBA from 27% to 44 at fourth grade and from 16.8% to about 33%. At fifth grade as measured by the SBA I Ready and our Eureka formative and summative assessments. This is a lot of work and those are pretty big increases and I want to call that out because the data is is pretty daunting. But what we're talking about is just targeting 15 students that passed. I mean, I'm going to assume that that number of students that passed in 2223 is going to stay constant. And we're not going to regress and all we're looking at is taking 15 students that are on the bubble. Targeting them and giving them those extra supports to try and get them to proficiency. Looking at the data from 2223, there are about 30 students that missed the cutoff score for a level three by 50 points. You know, and so I think that's work that we can dig into as we focus on on math for our whole school goal. Our next goal.
Sorry, real quick. So how did you come about this 44% and 33% target?
So the the scores are off of the third, fourth grade group from 2223 co-horted into fourth. Fourth and fifth grade of this year. And so again, that number staying constant as an example. I mean, we had 36 students at fourth and fifth grade pass the SBA, you know, with level proficiency. Out of those 37, five of them were MLO. And so those are the numbers that I'm working with and obviously there's going to be a gap with third grade because in this next group, 2324, that. Fifth grade group graduated middle school, the third grade group, we have no data for. And so we're really looking at just that fourth and fifth grade group as they matriculate up the next year. Does that make sense?
A little.
Okay, I can show you. I can show you the chart. For our next goal, so talking about that, that subset academical of the students that did reach proficiency. We're looking at increasing the percentage of students that are MLO or identified as MLO. On the math SBA from 13.8% to 56% as measured in evidence by the SBA. Again, if we're looking at just the total number of students that reached proficiency. From last year's third and fourth grade group who are now this year's fourth and fifth graders. Only 36 or 37 of them made it. And so out of that number, what is our subset group of students that are either identified as MLO? Have an individualized education plan and so on and targeting those students to try and make it as equitable as possible, if that makes sense. And so that number right there is is huge. Again, I'm calling this out because we're looking at just increasing that those five that passed if the 36, 37 stays constant. To target another 15 that are identified as MLO and gen ed to be able to pass the 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 summative exam for you for math. Excuse me. Our last goal is just our equity base score or other goal for the building. And this is continuing to work on our tier three students or those that are identified as two or more grade levels behind. So we decreased that number to 180 this this coming or this year. And we're looking just to keep chipping at that slowly. And so we're looking at the goal that we set for ourselves is decreasing it. Another 28% and this would be measured in evidence by our progress monitoring and ESGI and FMP assessments. This is really hard to do because a lot of the data like Deb just spoke to is incomplete and we're still waiting at the end of June and sometimes into July. For our data to come. And so a lot of the data that we're looking at of who is identified as tier three is a combination and triangulation of data between I Ready. Our ESGI platform are on demands and FFP assessments and so on.
Yeah, real quick. So last year, the goal was to decrease it by half, 50%. And this year, you're saying 20%. So is this based off of learnings from last year? Or are we too ambitious last year? Or can you just speak through that a little bit?
Yes, I was, we were actually going to talk to that and definitely really ambitious. I think the the challenge that we've discovered in the building is is just the work that we have in front of us. I think running two different programs within the building has been really, really challenging. And what I mean by that is we have. Our monolingual side and we have our dual language side. Example, this year, our kindergartners are learning the majority of their day in Spanish. And so they still, even though they get instructed in Spanish for 90% of their day. They are still responsible for taking every state exam in English. And so there's a lot of work there to do because they're not going to become bilingual, biliterate. With the work that we're doing until until some time from now. I mean, hopefully by fifth grade when they leave the building. Definitely, I mean, the goal would be by third grade when they start taking state exams. And so that's one challenge. The second challenge is coming out of the pandemic. We didn't realize how many students are two or more grade levels behind. I mean, that number was super daunting when we discovered that in in September. And so one thing I would say about that is that the difference between. Last year and the year before that is we didn't even know who they're, who those students were. I mean, now we have. Faces and names to those 214 students and we were able to do some great work within our acceleration block to decrease that. But even with all that work, it wasn't, it wasn't good enough. And so, I mean, we made some growth and we decreased it some, but I think. Being more realistic is a lot of the feedback I got from the SAT and from the building guiding coalition to make that goal attainable. Jesse, can you go to the next slide? Thank you. I'm going to switch it over to the Deb and Deb's going to talk a little bit about our. These are not secondary objectives. They're more like supplemental to the work they were doing, which is still work behind the scenes. As we're moving with our three big goals for the building.
So our first objective is we are changing over to math being our primary focus for the 2324 school year. While at the same time keeping literacy going and we also are very aware that literacy is honestly a big part of math. The children need to be able, especially on state tests, to be able to read. Application problems, to be able to write to application problems. So the comprehension we have in literacy. We need to keep that momentum going. Our second objective is the dual language program build out using the 9010 framework. So this year, as Hugo said, we have our kindergartners learning 90% of their day in Spanish. Next year, we will be moving that up to those children who are now, who will be in first grade. Will learn 80% of their day in Spanish and 20% in English. And we are getting ready for the roll up to second grade, which will be 7030. At this point, we're thinking probably we're going to focus on the K1 because. Right now, our first graders who would be second graders have only ever had 5050. And so to throw them into 7030 seems a little bit, a little bit unrealistic. So. But we are thinking ahead as far as hiring and curriculum. And what the 70% versus 30% English actually will look like. As as we move into this year. So we're really focused on building it up.
Deb? I always think about our audience, understanding this and trying to wrap my mind around the thing, the way this is communicated. The Frank Wagner model of learning is different from our other schools with. Kids being in class, part time in Spanish and part time in English. Could you give an overall or an overview of the learning model for Frank Wagner and how it's set up?
Sure. So like we're in transition, but the traditional 5050 model. Is our students receive literacy in both English and Spanish. During their 50% of of their day in English, they also receive the majority of their math instruction. And in the 50% of their day that is in Spanish, they also, they receive in addition to literacy. Their science and social studies. SEL kind of bridges between the two. The way we do literacy is if one teacher is teaching the writing unit, the other teacher is teaching the reading unit. With some extra time built in. So if if the English teacher is teaching the writing unit, the Spanish teacher will. Try to make sure there's 10 to 15 minutes where they're still writing in Spanish to keep, to keep up their skills and those alternate the reading and the writing. We are transitioning from that 5050 model K through five to a graduated model. So this year. Our our kindergartners are our first grade level to be transitioned to the 9010. So they are 90% in Spanish and 10% in English. And the 10% in English focuses a lot at this, the young age of around. I guess oral literacy more than a specific phonics curriculum or. Specific reading curriculum. It's done more through read alouds, conversation, things like that. We are starting to teach them now. Some of those specific phonics rules in English, just through shared writing and shared reading they have during that 10%. Next year, like I said, they'll go up to 80% in Spanish and 20% in English. 70 in the next grade is grade two, it'll be 7030. Grade three, I believe will be 6040 and then our grades four and five will be the 5050 model that I spoke about.
Deb, can I elaborate a little bit?
Please.
Um, one of the things, just to put in minutes for, to get a perspective is when we're talking about a 9010 model, right now kindergarten is getting 30 minutes of instruction in English. That's it. And so when I say 30 minutes of instruction, I'm talking about just instructional minutes. I mean, take away lunch and recess, take away morning recess, PM recess, take away specialists. And so that that chunk of time is what we're talking about, that they only get 30 minutes of that in English. First grade, it will be 60 minutes. Second grade will be 90 minutes. First grade, it will be sixty minutes, second grade will be ninety minutes, and third grade will be a hundred and twenty minutes. With the idea that by third grade, you know, they're going to be able to accelerate in their learning. And that's part of the data that we talked about in our fall presentation, that they would be outperforming their monolingual counterparts two to one. And right now that's not happening because we haven't been specific and, and intentional about what that targeting is of what's happening those, during those minutes.
Our third objective is focusing on behavior and socially emotional learning. We have really worked on building a strong tier one focus. And tier one focus means that instruction and those strategies that all students receive. And that about eighty percent of them, that's what they need. Tier two and tier three students need additional strategies, maybe more individualized behavior plans. And so while we've worked to build that strong tier one for the last several years through our PBS, our second step, working with zones. We are switching, not switching, we are focusing on the tier two and tier three behavior and interventions now. Again, knowing that that tier one has to remain very strong to lessen that need for any tier two and tier three work. So our third objective is, is around behavior and SEO.
Um, the last thing we want to talk about, just reflection on twenty-two, twenty-three. So you may be asking yourselves, how did we get here? And so we did get identified as a tier three comprehensive school by OSSI. OSSI is the Office of System and School Improvement, it's on the agenda, and OSPI. And so what that tier three comprehensive means is, and I would have included this in the presentation, but I can share with you guys later because it was shared with us after the fact, is if you look at our OSPI report card, report card on, online, there's the percent of students that met ELA proficiency and those that met math proficiency. It's the first thing that bum pops out on the webpage. Of that, five point five percent of our English language learners met ELA and two point nine percent met the math proficiency. So that was one indicator of why we were identified as tier three comprehensive. The other one would be our students with disabilities. Of that percentage again that you see on the report card, four point two percent met the ELA proficiency and six point three met the math proficiency. I mean, I'm sharing that data because I want to be transparent and it's also, I mean, it's a punch in the gut, for lack of better words, that Deb and I is building leaders because we realize how big that scope of the work is. And so that's what we're committed to. Next year is year three of our work together as a team. And so we've learnt a lot in year one, just trying to get the house in order between our instructional, operational and technical sides. We still have some work to do there. This year, we were able to build out a lot of, of our acceleration block and what we want instructional to look, look like in terms of our master schedule and making the master schedule for students, not for the adults, for lack of a better word. And then as we go into this next year, I mean, it's really digging into math. And I can't emphasize that enough because to me, being a former math teacher is just, it's gonna be easier to progress monitor. It's gonna be easier to keep cleaner data. And so I'm excited about that work, but I'm also not overwhelmed, but also cognizant of the fact that we have a lot of work ahead of us because we are hitting reset basically on our adopted Eureka curriculum at elementary. And so we're gonna spend some August days talking about that. And then I'm hopeful that that work continues to live out throughout the year in our building PD. And we get a chance to come back to it because what I don't want to happen is it turns into a one and done. And you know, Deb and I are left holding the bill per se, and we're right back to square one. And so that's the math side. And then on the, just the building, I, where we're at, at climate and culture wise, I think we've come a long ways. I know that, I mean, I asked one para that's been in my building. I am her ninth principal in her fifteen years that she's been there. And so I'm excited about our panorama survey that just went out to our, our community, to our teachers. Our students are gonna do it here before the twentieth deadline, May twenty-eighth deadline. So I'm excited to see that data, what that looks like, because it gives Deb and I an idea of what we need to do is building leaders and some of the work that we have to partner with, with our community. And then I think the last thing I would say was just excited about the continuing work of building a team. Last year, we had a lot of turnover in the building, sixteen of the twenty-seven classroom teachers turned over. And this year, I mean, based on intention surveys that were sent out, there were maybe four responses where some people are going to move on. And those are for multiple reasons, getting married, moving out of the state, et cetera. So we're just excited about having some stability moving forward to be able to continue this work because it's hard to do when we hit reset, but we also hit reset to the staff that we're working with. And then the second bullet point, continued data analysis, going back to my comment about the progress monitoring we have to do as a building, I think focusing on math is gonna be, it's gonna make that easier. We've already had some great conversations of what that looks like. And then the biggest thing I want to focus on is just using the tools that we have at our disposal, like ESGI, our platform to, to load our data into and load some tests into. But also just making it almost like a great book that Panorama can pull from. So that Panorama can give you those nice colorful reports that, that it's known for, you know, those kinds of things. And then the last bullet point for next steps in twenty-four, twenty-five. I, I'd like to think myself as a one-year, three-year and five-year, five-year type of guy. And so, I mean, my planning is, is evidenced by that. I mean, the, some of the stuff we put into, into place in our first year together, working together is, is coming to fruition. It's gonna come into fruition here this next year. We're excited about that. And then in twenty-four, twenty-five, it's gonna be taking our twelve burner stove that we have Frank Wagner and, you know, moving all the pots that are simmering, some of our boiling over. Some have burnt and figuring out how to manage them and move them all in the same direction. Because what I don't want to happen is our instructional side of the pyramid goes further or eclipses our social emotional side of the pyramid. And then we have some behavior work to do just in building out our class or our school expectations, classic expectation. So that work needs to walk concurrently together. And so that's some of the work that we have thinking about in twenty-four, twenty-five and how we're gonna do that. I think that's it. Questions?
It's really good. Thank you, guys. Some of the things that you mentioned there, I think go perfectly along with the, the objectives that you said that are very high level. You know, focusing more on math, working on the continuation of the dual language program, the behavior stuff with the tier two and tier three, but also things like you're mentioning continuity of staff. I'm curious, on a more micro level, are there other intentions that you guys are doing to be intentional about reaching the goals that you're talking about, saying, hey, we want to move our test scores X percent in this positive direction? Here are the big picture items that we're doing, but when you put meat on the bones, are there conversations that you're having at the grade level teams that you're having with them? What are those, some of those conversations look like within PLCs, things like that? Say, okay, but within the school day, these are things that we're doing specifically with instruction or with behavior in order to support students in reaching those goals.
Definitely. I think what you're, I mean, what I hear you talking about is just the idea of transference and the idea of, of teaching assessing, then what do we do with that? So two things, I mean, with transference, Chris and I have had that conversation a lot lately. That's one of the, the areas that we need to work on. I know that there's great stuff happening on internally as a building, we're seeing growth. Our growth percentiles on our report card speak to that. But how do we get that growth to translate on to, you know, high stakes testing for, for lack of a better word? That's one. And then the second thing is those conversations about we teach and we assess, and then we kind of move on. I mean, that's what we've done for so long, just not at Frank Wagner, but I think it's the system, you know, across the country. And so being intentional about, we teach, we assess, we figure out what's, who got it and who didn't. I mean, answering those four PLC questions and then using that data to inform our instructional practice in our groupings and what we need to do. Because moving on is, we've tried that already, it's not doing anything for us. You can look at our data and, you know, it speaks for itself. And so I think those are the ongoing conversations with our teams. This year, we spent the whole year, I mean, learning how to work together as a collaborative PLC team, studying our norms, especially when we agree to disagree. Those kinds of things, the nuts and bolts, but I think the conversations of digging into our data is what we're getting to just right now. And, you know, as luck would have it, it's the end of the school year. So we're gonna have to start all over again in August and frontload that. But we've made some incredible growth just in, since January to right now. Because as you guys remember, Frank Wagner is piloting the PLC time on Fridays. No other building is doing that right now. So every Friday, our teams get forty minutes of collaborative team time to be able to go through those questions. And so that's been nice having, and I'm hopeful that we have that again, starting the first Friday when we come back in September. Because we're gonna make up a lot of ground that we kind of lost when we didn't get to do that this, this last school year, if that makes sense.
Yeah, so this is very good. Thank you very much for putting all this data together. One thing that I'm curious about, or any blockers that you ran into while you were trying to achieve these goals last year? And more importantly, you know, as you approach this year, what blockers do you have or that you foresee that you do not have a immediate solution to?
That's a great, great question, Director. I think the best answer I can give you is they kind of just hit me in the face or they hit both of us in the face when they just pop up out of nowhere. And I say that because I think one of the challenging things that you guys have discussed as a board is our strategic plan as a district. I mean, not having a strategic plan is kind of like, you know, we're, it's the blind leading the blind, for lack of a better example. And it's hard to do that. And so I think that's one blocker of like, what is our ultimate goal? You know, and so that's the work that we've done internally is building, trying to identify who we are. I mean, that, that was my opening slide. I mean, learning is required at Frank Wagner. And I think one of the things that we're heading, heading towards as a district is that it's high levels of learning for all. You know, all means all. I look at Brett's, you know, slogan up at, up the high school, high school plus for everyone. On those kinds of things. And so I think that, that's one thing. I think the second thing is, and I think our teachers would speak to this, is we have a lot of stuff on our plates and some of that, I understand that it's gonna be there no matter what. I think just being strategic about what's on the plate and what we're gonna take off the plate. Because there's some things that, again, we've done in the past and we've never circled back to. And I think it's human nature, especially with our, our staff that have been here for a while, that this too shall pass because it's just, it's been a one and done and then we just move on. And so when I say what's on the plate and where we're gonna take off, I think it's, again, goes back to our strategic plan of clearly identifying who we are, what we're all about and how we do business in Monroe. You know, and then everything else to that, to me is just peripheral. I mean, it's not my focus. And I think that would go a long ways in getting buy-in from, from just our team across the district. Because it is overwhelming. I mean, just looking at, at everything. The example of, of that would be the number of platforms, systems or programs that we have as a district. We went through and did an audit back in the fall with our SAT, we have like fourteen of them that we could count in Frank Wagner. And then we had disagreement about which ones are pre and opposed, what's progress monitoring, what's a one and done? And just having those conversations because we were all over the board. And, and I mean, our SAT is five people and each one of them had their own idea of what, what those meant. So just being fine tuned, you know, when it comes to the nuts and bolts, because the nuts and bolts matter. And that's, that's one of the messages I think we've heard from our staff that, you know, the, the, the lights have to work when we flip the switch, you know, just the basic necessities. And when we don't have those, it just makes it hard to, to move forward.
Thank you.
Well, you and Deb are doing a great job. I think you have one of the most challenging schools and learning models of all the schools. So I want to thank you for your work. One of the items that that I've been focusing on or thinking about is preparing the students for the next, the next grade, so for sixth grade, so do they have the tools in the math and the literacy and the communication? So builds upon each other and skill levels. So are we preparing the kids for the next levels of education so they can be successful and build on those? What, what would you comment on that?
Whether we have them right now or not?
Well, we're the, if the students are gonna be prepared to be successful at higher levels based on what, what's been the, the building block.
The honest answer would be no, I mean, not at this moment. I mean, I think Deb and I, that goes back to our comment about just that we lose sleep about that, that our kids are moving on to sixth grade. And we didn't get enough time with them to get them fully prepared for fifth grade. I think our, our groups, like I mentioned, or we mentioned back in our earlier presentation, there's, there's pockets of great stuff happening in cohorts of kids. But that level of what we want to happen, I think, or what we want to see happen, exit our building and go into middle school, where we could say, you know, these students are prepared at grade level or above for whatever, you know, they have to encounter in middle school is gonna happen in, in the next one to three years, you know, to get to that level. And I think that's, again, due to a lot of the organizational and technical stuff that we've had to get, get in order to be able to get to where we're going for, for an example. And so I think we, we just, we just finished the SBA in math this week. We're getting our scores trickling in and I know that those are gonna hurt. I mean, I'm already bracing myself for them because our, our focus on math has been on the back burner for so long. We've been trying to get our ELA curriculum just, you know, onboard and everybody trained on it and how to use it. And so I am super excited though about the testing this week, just because I expect those stores, those scores to be double of what we're doing in math. And I, I know saying double is putting my foot in my mouth because, I mean, we're dealing with little human beings and that, you know, life, life affects them. And so I'm optimistic though, that a lot of the work that we put in, I mean, I hear, keep hearing from our teachers and from our paras that this year, they've, they've enjoyed working at Frank Wagner and they've seen the growth, they've made relationships with more kids than they've ever had in the past. Because I think through the systems that we put in place, we've kind of forced them out of their comfort zone and make, made them embrace the idea that all means all. As you know, when I'm walking down the hallway and I see Deb misbehaving or running, it's like I, I now have permission to say, no, no, we're gonna do that again and hold each other accountable to that work. And so all that just makes me optimistic that in one to three years, I, I can answer that question when you ask me, yes, you know.
Well, just know that the board supports and wants to, if available, put resources to Frank Wagner. It's one of the most challenging situations, you know, of, of all the schools. And we'd like to see you around here a long time. And then I hope to see you with gray hair and see the kids that you taught at such an early age graduate. So no, it can't be done. So we support you. So thank you for your work.
I appreciate that. That, that means a lot. I mean, there's a running joke. My parent group laughed, Deb did not, when I told her next year is my third year. And so I'm cognizant of that. And I, I mean, it means a lot that you say that because I, I do want, I mean, like I told the board last time. I mean, to me, I have students that are gifted, you know, they're halfway, they're bilingual. And for them to be at the high school where I was not too long ago and have them or see them as their adult selves or many adult selves, where they're still reading at their grade, fourth grade level. And then, and they are bilingual, I mean, to me, that's unacceptable. And that's one of the things that I put for the staff that I've challenged them with, that we need to change that narrative. And then I hope to be here. I mean, I've told Deb and I've told the staff that my daughter will turn three this summer and in two years' time, she will be a kindergartner at Frank Wagner and going to work with me. So I'm excited about that.
Well, the board has high expectations and I have high expectations. And as you mentioned before, it's expected that they succeed and that they do well. And there's no reason they can't. It's, it's a different way of learning and effort, but I know you guys can do it. But we, I expect a lot of work and just the higher, higher levels of testing. And beginning to understand how difficult it is and the challenges you have. So I know you guys can do it. I know that teaching and staff from the district can support. So again, thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
To piggyback on what Director Whitfield said, I also just want to take the time to honor the work that you two have done in leading this work at the school that, I mean, you provided stability and consistency. And that takes a tremendous amount of work, all of the details that you're talking about and developing the systems and processes. And I just appreciate both of you. You've created a culture and set a tone for caring and accountability. And it does not go unnoticed. And I just am so appreciative of both of you and the work that you continue to do at Frank Wagner and for our students there and for our families there. Last week, I met with three Latina students up at the high school. And we had a conver- And we had a conversation around how these are three Latina students who speak English really well and are in AP classes. And they're looking for ways to support some of their MLL students who don't have maybe who didn't have that growing up or didn't have that support at home. And I just was in awe that we have. Three sixteen year old young women who are looking for ways to support other students who are also sixteen, who are. Not on the path to graduate because of a language barrier. So I just, I wanted to honor the work that you two are doing and. Let you know that you're setting the tone and changing the trajectory for a lot of these students and families. So thank you so much for doing that.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Just comment for me. When I came in toward Frank Wagner and kind of gave you my opinion of the difference, what I saw from when my students attended to now. It really is night and day with expectations on the walls, the energy throughout the building. The way that the students are learning, it's a completely different place and what the two of you have been able to do. In the last three years, given everything that has been thrown at you is incredible. I appreciate your thoughtfulness, your. Just your your thoughts on what's working, what's not working, your ability to. Sit back and say, okay, this isn't working, this didn't work, let's try something different. And being able to reroute and to do that and continue to learn and grow for the betterment of our students. That means a lot and it speaks a lot to who you two are as individuals as well. And we are very lucky to have you. And I look forward to celebrating with you when some of those test results come in. And just I'm excited to continue to see what's going to happen with the. Care and love that you put into your building, your teachers, your students. And how the students are going to be better for that. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you both so much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Please keep up the hope, guys. You're doing great and I'm excited to see what you do.
Okay, moving on to agenda item two point zero two, schedule of school board meetings for the twenty three twenty four school year.
Yes, Marcia Larson.
Yes, just a couple of comments. Holly and I put together. A suggested schedule for you for the coming school year. It really mirrors what your schedule looks like right now. For the school year. And when we looked at it, of course, we compared it to the student calendar so that we're avoiding vacations. We also took a look at the WASDA meetings that you. May or may not be engaged in as well as some of the meetings that Sean will have through WASA. Or other organizations. So we tried to build around that. You'll notice that at the end of the schedule, May twenty eighth, that is a Tuesday meeting. Suggested because Monday is a holiday. That's where Memorial Day falls, I believe there. It also reflects the four PM workshops and five o'clock. Regular meeting starts. So this is for you to. Take a look at, it'll come back to you at the next board meeting. Really seriously look at it to make sure we didn't make any mistakes. Because sometimes. You look at things so much that you don't see where you've missed a date or or a certain time. So. Or if you have comments today about. What's reflected here.
Questions, comments? Thank you, Dr. Arson. Moving on to agenda item two point zero three, recognition of senior student representative. What? Nathan Burrell. I I have something pre-written. On behalf of the board. I want to express our sincere gratitude and appreciation for your dedicated service as student representative of the school board. You are the first student rep to complete the newly adopted two-year term. Go Nathan. Throughout your tenure, you consistently demonstrated exceptional leadership qualities, professionalism, and a genuine passion for improving the experience for all students in our schools. We appreciate the commitment you made to the board and the contributions you made on behalf of students. Thank you. You will be so missed. And I want to personally thank you. For rolling with my mom jokes, even when they were really bad. I even put an insert laugh here, so. On behalf of the board, we wish you the very best in your future endeavors. Your ability to collaborate, advocate and lead with will undoubtedly make a positive difference in whatever path you choose. And we hope you come back and visit when you are in town. Once again, we extend our heartfelt gratitude for your exceptional service as a student representative. Thank you, Nathan.
Thank you. I would like to say a few things that I've learned in my service here on this board. When I came in, I didn't know exactly what I'd be doing or what I would learn in the process, but I didn't know that I'd be learning more than I could ever. Ever understand, but. I am so grateful for each of you and the experiences and conversations I've had. After I come home from every board meeting. My head is just full of ideas and thoughts on how I can make the school better and also what's going on and. How we can possibly make this all work. My perspective has changed dramatically since I came in. Now, when I go to school, I see. I see students who have potential, just like me, they can do incredible things. And now my thoughts are tuned more tuned to how can I help them? And how can? How can we all become better together? And I just thank you all for helping me to have that perspective here. It's true, I have gained amazing, I've gained good skills here, communication. Better understanding of what a community is and how to make it better. Gain some sense of charity and selflessness and. You have all been great examples for me, especially in. The hard times of tough conversations or. Sort of more fierce debates or public comments. But. I've learned so much. It's incredible. Thank you for all you've done. And a few of the principles I've learned. I always find myself that. I like to go back to the principles because when I do, they're a solid foundation that I can work off of. I've learned that. Well, I called my grandpa one time, my great grandfather, he. Had a degree in Spanish and special education. And he taught me that enthusiasm is one of the most important things that we can have in education. And so now when I go to school, I try to be enthusiastic. I try to help the people around me by just enjoying what I what I'm learning. And being enthusiastic about. The algebra or whatever I'm whatever I'm learning about. The little AP gov discussions we're having just to get people going because when I'm enthusiastic, other people will want to learn too. And that love of learning is what has driven me to want to help other people to experience that. Because life is so much more precious when you're learning things. And. Yeah. And I know that service brings blessings and that. I can make a difference through the bottom up approach. When I came in, I thought I was going to make a big difference. Just by like. Helping with policies and being official and doing all these cool things. And that's cool stuff. But I've learned more than ever that it's the one-on-one interactions. With each of you, with students, with executive staff. That really over a long term makes the differences in our community. The praise, the inspiration, the encouragement that you give to others is what truly makes the biggest difference in the long term. So, thank you.
President Bumpus, can we get a picture with everybody with Nathan?
Sure. Next bomb for teaching me.
Okay. Can I give Nathan one more round of applause, please? Two years. You did a great job. Thank you. Oh, so moving on to agenda three, item three point zero one, we have student representatives. Our student reps will present a report highlighting student activities throughout the district. Nathan, last one.
Actually, you want to go first?
Okay. So there's a lot going on at Sky Valley for the end of the year. Tonight, from five to eight. There is spectacular, which is the Science and Arts Fair. And basically, I think there, most of the classes have something in the, like, in the. In the fair and. They're judged and you don't have to put them for judging, but a lot of the kids did. And I was walking around there today and there was a lot of stuff. And if we had to, if we get done time, I'll probably go back. On the little gym, the big gym, the gathering room, the courtyard and several classrooms are being used. For our science fair. So that's really cool. Yeah. And then. In the next few weeks, we have piano and guitar spotlight night, choir spotlight night, fiddle and Irish dance spotlight night and a night of music and ballet. We also have the Montessori ceremony, the spring formal masquerade and two end of year camps. For ACT, we're going to Sun Lakes, Oregon, so that will be really fun. And then ESS and STEM are going to Salt Creek. And ESS stands for Environmental. Study School. And then also Jude Locasa, a first grade student at Sky Valley Education Center. Won the local VFW Star Spangled Banner singing contest and he will now move on to state level. Yep. Okay, that's all my report.
Let's see. So recent activities at the high school, we've had prom, it was really exciting. We all took to the dance floor, had a good time there. And it was great activity. I'm going to give you a quick debrief on. On our Student Advisory Council, we just finished up our last meeting for the school year. I was only able to attend about half of them this year. But the Student Advisory Council, to jog your memory, it's a group that. Works with me, with Laura, with Mrs. Whitworth, with the superintendent to advise us. And really to provide influence on the school, the school board in a more direct manner than was previously. And so we talked about what we've worked on. And all the. And what we've learned and how we can do better next year. We're looking to improve it next year with. Both time to learn and time to get feedback and to. Continue to use protocols to. Provide input and make things happen. Just to provide a real community where students can get together to come up with good solutions and talk with the staff to. Get a better understanding of how things are working. So they've made recommendations for next year and I won't be there, but I'm excited to see what they do with it. At MHS, Deca. Had new elections. Sorry, the. Drama, the drama program had new elections for their board members. So it's a group of about seven members who lead the drama program there. To work with basically everything that the students get to do there. Asian, for Asian Pacific Islander, Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month. We had a group at our school, we got together to put on. First to Kill My Father. It was a movie about the chem- chem- Cambodian genocide. Which now I need to look up and learn about. But. So a lot of learning there. On the MHS Racing Equity Team, it's planning for Pride Month and. Yeah. And then moving on, upcoming at the high school, we have Spring Fling, which is going to involve a whole bunch of cool activities at the high school. On June second, I believe, with frisbee. Ultimate Frizzy, stuff like that. A lot of fun activities. I'm excited. I have to get a team together. And additionally, we're going to have a moving up ceremony on June ninth, which involves everyone in the high school. Getting together to celebrate all we've done for the year and then. Let the seniors get out of there, I guess. I'm excited because I get to play with the percussion, my percussion team. The drum line to put on a cool trash can performance. So that's going to be solid. I have a solos here because I'm a senior. But uh, it's exciting. Lots of awesome stuff going on. With the world of sports, track just finished up. I had the opportunity to run some pretty good races at the end of season. I ran a mile in four minutes and forty seconds. And it was a five second personal record. And a district's around the thirty two hundred meter. And my best time for the season was a ten minute and ten second race, which was. Two five, two five oh fives back to back was pretty good. And. That should keep me on the records for a while at my school. And. With other sports, they're all finishing up, track and. Golf, still have a few athletes still continuing. So kudos to those athletes who still made it. And then all the other, to my understanding, all the other. Sports, I mean, tennis, girls tennis, boys soccer, girls softball, boys baseball and track. And boys and girls golf. All of them except for golf and track are over. With several teams making it into state. Baseball did pretty well this year. Made it into state for the first time in forty five years, which is awesome. So they were very excited about that. I got to watch a couple of their games. And then. Over at Running Start and CHS, we're finding that students will, rumors I've heard. Pretty certain that students will be able to. Have cheaper running start next year when it comes to summer classes. They were, they were already able to do it free during the school year. And CHS, which is the. College in the High School Program, where you take a classing, you can take a class in high school and then it gives you college credits. Which used to cost about two hundred twenty dollars every semester. My understanding is it's now going to be free. Due to recent state legislature stuff. And I do believe that's everything I've got. Oh, and one more thing, on June sixth. I had a parent come up to me and make sure that this gets in our meeting. Make sure to bring friends, family, everyone down over to the June sixth senior parade. We're going to be going down Main Street in a couple of weeks. The other cars, seniors aren't allowed to drive, so we'll have to get people to drive us. But it'll be a blast. I've been to the, I've been to it every time for the past two or three years. So it's always good. So bring all friends and family and have a good time there. And thank you, guys. That's awesome. That's weird. Anyway, thank you.
Questions or comments? Those are really great reports. Thank you both. Okay, moving on to agenda item three point zero three, we have public comment. Just as a reminder, any public. Oh, just kidding, three point zero two, consideration of donations. Go ahead, Director Barnes.
All right. Okay, so just to read off here, we've got quite a few donations coming in Grocery Outlet. They've donated two hundred and twenty dollars for the sole purpose of purchasing books for the Monroe School District Libraries. Bearcat Pride has donated a monetary grant in the amount of one thousand dollars for the sole purchase of the purchase of final forms, which is an online registration platform for athletic teams and clubs. Bearcat Pride has donated a monetary grant in the amount of three hundred dollars for the sole purpose of purchasing books by Mr. Adams. Malt B Parent Teacher Organization has donated a monetary grant in the amount of two thousand dollars for the sole purpose of expenses relating to transportation for field trips. And Delta Airlines Cyber Grants has donated a monetary grant in the amount of five hundred dollars for the sole purpose of using the funds where it's needed the most. Thank you so much to all of those who continue to partner with us in supporting our students in our classrooms for their success. We truly appreciate. We truly appreciate it and we cannot thank you enough.
Thank you, Director Barnes. Okay, agenda item 3.03, public comment. As a reminder, any public comment forms received after the meeting has started will be saved for the following meeting. "We welcome and value public comment on educational issues and recognize the importance of the opportunity for members of the public to express their thoughts to the school board. It is a policy of the Monroe School District to promote mutual respect, civility, and orderly conduct among district employees, parents, and the public. We kindly ask that you refrain from comments that violate school district policy. Individuals are asked to limit comments to three minutes. A designated speaker for a group is asked to keep comments to five minutes. If you have a personnel concern, any staff member in the room can help with how to go forward with a complaint about personnel. The board does not respond to public comments during the business meeting. Please know that the board's silence is neutral. It is neither a signal of agreement nor disagreement with the speaker's remarks. The president may interrupt or terminate an individual's statement when it is personally directed, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, targets a protected class, or exceeds the time limit. As the board president, I will determine the appropriateness of all such rulings. When I call your name, please step up to the microphone. If attending the meeting virtually, please join us as a panelist, allow video, and unmute your microphone." Okay, our first speaker is Melanie Lockhart. Can I have you please state your name for the record and your relationship with our schools?
Good evening. My name is Melanie Lockhart, I'm a parent of two children currently attending elementary school in Monroe. It has been 116 days since Director Molly Barnes sought out special feedback from a politically partisan group of women from behind the closed doors of executive session on January 26th. Since then, there has been zero accountability, no censure of her actions, zero policy change, and so far, zero additional board training that the public has been made aware of despite President Bumbus' statement about her commitments earlier this year. I get it, you were likely directed to not say anything further, but you told all of us nothing illegal happened, so what's the holdup? There can't be legal ramifications if nothing illegal happened, right? The alternative, if not based on directive, is that none of you feel like Director Barnes did anything wrong. Why then were some of us, myself included, told that we could use, I quote, "appropriate channels that are available to all" when we asked flat out to be messaged in the future during all executive sessions for feedback, as Director Barnes did with her friends in the group, only open to conservative women? Which is it? Is it okay, or is it not okay? You can't have both. And if it's not okay, why have you done nothing about it? You may have hoped this would get swept under the rug. It's the historical approach of this district and many of the people who have served on this board in the past. But these things don't just die when nothing is actually done about them. It's been made abundantly clear that none of you who are on the board in January and part of that executive session are actually committed to transparency and accountability as you have claimed. When will this board actually do better in this regard? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Melanie. Can I please have Dr. Laura Wagner? Hey Laura, your name and your relationship to the school district, please.
Hi, I'm Dr. Laura Wagner, I have two daughters in Monroe School District. Actually, my oldest went to Frank Wagner, my youngest is still there, so it was cool to hear that part, thank you. Yeah, I'm here with a heavy heart, guys. Okay, I want to discuss the upcoming eighth grade party being planned by the Park Place Middle School PTO and Principal Hillson. Also, I'm a group, if you notice, so pleased if I could have five minutes, that would be great. From my experience attending every public PTO meeting since November that was available for me to go to, since every other one is private, I believe this party poses a threat to the lives of children in Monroe. My concern is this event is being organized only with input from a PTO board of four parents and one principal, and there has been no discussion of health and safety concerns at any of the public board meetings. And by that, I mean PTO board meetings. The event is scheduled to be held at the Fairgrounds Evergreen Speedway stage area, and will be attended by eighth graders from all schools in the district. So that's our, all four of the middle schoolers coming together to like meet and greet kind of before high school, but also they don't know each other. Okay, as of last week, 207 tickets were reportedly sold so far. It could get bigger than that, it could be 250, what if it was bigger? It's a pretty big event. This party will feature a DJ, electronic dance music, lights, and oversized lawn games. This type of party could be called a rave by some people since it features electronic dance music and lighting, etc. While raves are associated with club drugs like ecstasy and ketamine, my main concern today is fentanyl. Okay? In the last two to three years, drugs have become much more accessible. Children can buy pills off Snapchat, which is an app you can download on your phone, and have those pills delivered anywhere, not through the mail, actually delivered via car wherever you want. You don't have to drive to get them, they come to you. Many of the kids that die from fentanyl poisoning never intended to use fentanyl, did not have any history of prior substance use. There was a recent news special on King Five where local mothers of kids who lost their lives to fentanyl repeated the same story. Their son or daughter bought one single pill of Percocet off Snapchat, and instead they received a deadly dose of fentanyl. Since this party looks like a rave, it's likely that kids might try and purchase club drugs and might instead get fentanyl. Our entire community will be heartbroken if there is a single death at a party like this one. To my knowledge, having attended the public PTO meetings, there has been no discussion about drug use or prevention at this party. Now additionally, the fundraising tool used to raise money for this event, in my opinion, was also a poor choice. Eighth grade students were given a blank calendar to take home for the month of March. The goal was to have people they know sign up for a date on the calendar and give the student the amount of money that corresponds to that day's date. For instance, if someone signed up for the 10th, they would give the student $10, etc. So if you add up the dates from 1 to the plus 2, plus 3, plus 4, plus 5 to 31, you come up to $496. According to the PTO newsletter, and this is estimate, I didn't look up exactly, only about 22 students participated, yet raised over $4,000. I think it's obvious this fundraising method of sending out blank calendars and asking students to return with envelopes of cash up to a possible $496 each gives eighth graders access to large amounts of cash and therefore puts them at risk. So not only is the PTO planning a small rave at the fairgrounds, they also provided eighth graders with a fundraising tool that could be easily misused to collect cash. They have done so with the approval of the Park Place Middle School Principal Hillson. Putting kids in a risky situation like this one is unreasonable. I believe that even at this point, before the party even takes place, that Principal Hillson may have already met criteria to constitute negligence, if not gross negligence, if not willful negligence, possibly even recklessness. Principal Hillson has approved the use and distribution of a questionable tool for fundraising, then approved what amounts to an eighth grader rave with no public discussion concerning health and safety. I have contacted a lawyer myself to discuss these issues, and part of that is to protect myself and my child from retaliation. I'm also a doctor, I have a liability. I made an oath to do no harm, I have to stand by that. I suggest the school board act immediately to remove Principal Hillson from her job at Park Place Middle School. This afternoon, I called the Snohomish County Fire Marshal's Office, Monroe Police Department, and the Snohomish County Sheriff's Department. None of them were aware of any party.
I'm just going to ask you to pause for a little bit, I'm a little concerned that you may be violating privacy rights or getting a little
Privacy rights for whom?
Or laws protecting privacy and laws prohibiting defamation, so I'm just going to ask you to pause.
I'm not violating them, I stand by this, I've already spoken to my lawyer, and you guys will receive a more in-depth email with lawyer permission. Yeah, I'm happy to stand up for what I just said.
Okay, in any case, I just ask that you just model respectful behavior for students who may be watching.
I am, I have enthusiasm.
Okay.
Get it? For real. Okay, thank you. Yeah, this afternoon, I called the Snohomish County Fire Marshal's Office, Monroe Police Department, and Snohomish County Sheriff's Department, none of which were aware of any party being planned at the fairgrounds with eighth graders in June. I don't even know that the parents buying the $15 ticket for the eighth grade party are aware that there have been no public discussions about health and safety at this event. Having such a small group of people, four people in the PTO, insist on only having their voices heard is a significant risk to our community and our children. I request swift and immediate oversight of the Monroe Park Place Middle School PTO and their planning of this party. I personally would like to encourage the district to make an intentional move from PTOs to PTAs, which have built-in security and accountability. But now is not the time to debate the PTO or the PTA. It is a time to take action to be sure that students in our district are safe and informed. The PTO board members are just trying to have a fun party for their kids, but I don't think they're aware that they're throwing a rave that could pose health and safety concerns. While I've had disagreements with these board members, and I have, I know they love their kids as much as I love mine, and they would be heartbroken if anyone's son or daughter was injured, or worse yet, poisoned to death by fentanyl at this event. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Moving on to agenda 4.01, budget extension adoption. Do we have? Did you want to speak specifically to agenda item 4.04, Heather, or? I was, yeah, I was going to call it during agenda item 4.04, but we couldn't do it right now during public. Okay. Would you prefer to do it during that agenda item? Okay. Okay, perfect, thank you, Heather. Yeah. Jeff? Oh. Okay, would you, okay, so you have a public comment and a comment on a specific agenda item. Would you like to cover it during, all during public? Okay, let's go ahead and do it right now, then, public comment, is it Jeffrey? Okay, awesome, let's go, Jeff, all right. Okay, Jeff, your name and your relationship to the school district. Hi.
Hi, my name is Jeff Bennett. I have two students in the Monroe School District. My daughter in second grade at Frank Wagner, my son in fifth grade dual-enrolled at Frank Wagner in Sky Valley. So during this public comment, I wanted to share a little bit about my experience in transferring mid-year to Monroe School District. I understand that there's not as many mid-year transfers in Monroe as in some other communities. I do have an affiliation with the military, so I've lived in communities where it's much more common. But I wanted to share with the board that overall, we found everyone at the school district and the school extremely welcoming and caring and wanting to do the best for our kids. However, there were just some logistical things that I think a policy for ensuring that families entering the school year mid-year might help improve, and I think that's something you might want to look at in the future. One, the bus schedule and request system had already been set up to request stuff for the next year. And so it was confusing at first, we ended up filling out the form anyhow and getting everything scheduled, but it took a little bit of time. Also, the website didn't include a current schedule for the Frank Wagner Elementary, so like figuring out what start time and things was very difficult for us. And did have a schedule from the pandemic time when there was online learning. And I learned that the principal didn't have the ability to make those changes themselves. So those are things that, that would be helpful. Also, we had limited contact with teachers ahead of time. It took three weeks to get any IEP implementations for my, my daughter. And fortunately, we had, there's, you guys have a great employee, Camille, who works at the school district. When we went and kind of shared some of our frustrations, she was very responsive, took ownership, and got things scheduled right away to start taking care of the solutions and provided follow-up and making sure everything was taken care of. So I just wanted to do a call-out to such a great employee that took ownership in that situation. We did run into some, we had originally requested that my son be able to be dual-enrolled, and that was originally denied, and then we were having some real difficulties with differentiation. He was a head in math and he was being given a book to read during that time when he finished the assignments and not actually getting math work, but the district worked and resolved that and sees now dual-enrolled. So again, positive outcomes, but some hiccup. The other thing I just wanted to say is, Sky Valley is a wonderful school, but it also is limited to parents that have the time to be able to be there with their kids. We didn't want to do straight enrollment this year because of the mid-move and things that my wife had to take care of. And then I just want to point that that's not the solution for differentiation for everyone, especially dual-income families and families with so hope that we can expand those things in the future. Look forward to working with the board in the future and increasing collaboration, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jeff. Let's do it, Heather, thank you. All right, Heather.
Yes.
Name and relationship to the school district.
Hi, my name is Heather Young, and I'm a parent in the district. A couple of things. As you, as you look at the schedule of meetings for next year, one of the things that I would really appreciate if you would give some reflection to is how approachable you are making yourselves to parents in the district, especially those who are fully employed. A lot of people have difficulty attending the meetings at 5:00 PM, especially now that public comment forms have to be turned in before the meeting starts. And so it, it's feeling, intentional or not, like you're becoming less accessible to parents and the community. And if that's not your intention, then maybe, maybe think about how you're planning the schedule and what you're doing in some of these changes. In section 404, on the updates to the Meeting Conduct Order of Business and Quorum, you're requiring that a person with a disability give the district three days' notice of a need for accommodation when we only get 24 hours' notice of agenda items. So unfortunately, most disabilities don't come with clairvoyance, so I'm not sure how a person with disability could give you three days' notice. So it's not very accessible. And then lastly, on section 405, with the executive session language, it seems like a missed opportunity to provide some clarity around expectations and acceptable behavior that might help resolve some of the outstanding issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Okay, moving on to agenda item 4.01, budget extension adoption, is there a motion?
I moved that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approved and adopts the 2022-2023 general fund budget extension as presented.
Is there a second? Second, there's a motion in second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve and adopts the 22-23 general fund budget extension as presented, discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed 5 to 0. Moving on to agenda item 4.02, illustrative math, Kendall Hunt, sixth grade to eighth grade middle school math adoption, is there a motion?
I moved that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve and adopt, approve the adoption of illustrative math, Kendall Hunt, sixth grade to eighth grade middle school math curriculum.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion in a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the adoption of illustrative math, Kendall Hunt, sixth grade to eighth grade middle school math curriculum. school math curriculum. Discussion?
I just want to say, I really appreciate the intentionality that has gone into the vertical alignment with our team and the presentations that we've had for the weeks coming up to this. It has been really helpful for me to wrap my head around what Eureka is doing in the elementary and what we're doing secondary to be intentional to standards. And so that's been really helpful. So just shout out to our curriculum team. It's been very, very helpful for us to wrap our heads around that.
Further discussion? Okay, all in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed five to zero. Moving on to Agenda Item 4.03, Monroe Performing Arts Boosters Donation. Is there a motion?
I moved that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approved the Monroe Performing Arts Booster Donation, presented the grant in the amount of $5,552 for the sole purpose and express purpose of student scholarships for band trips.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion in a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approved the Performing Arts Boosters Donation, presented. Discussion?
I just think that's super cool and raising those funds, that's a huge deal for our students, especially when finances are tight for a lot of families. This is gonna bless a lot of kids.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed five to zero. Moving on to Agenda Item 4.04, is there a motion?
I moved that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve revisions, Paul. Revisions to Policy 1410, Executive will close sessions as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion in a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approved revisions to Policy 1400, Meeting Conduct Order of Business and Quorum as presented. Discussion? Yep, you can come up, Jeff.
Hi, Jeffrey Bennett again. I still have two kids in the district, Frank Wagner and Sky Valley. So on 4.04, just this, this Agenda Item's title is a little disconcerting because it kind of misses one of the major revisions that's, that's in here, which is the removal of the full part, public participation piece. I get it's under specific special meetings, but there are multiple things within there. One was brought up by a previous comment of meeting notices being 24 hours before the meeting, but for a requirement of notifying the district three days if someone has a disability. Three days prior notice allows individuals, that would be basically on a Friday prior to the meeting, to work, write you guys' letters, provide additional input if they can't attend the meeting, especially since there's, there's timeframes, and, and participate. And when you also have the aspect of if a meeting is being held remotely, that they're listening is participation, it's, it's a form of participation, but it's not fostering that mutual respect for all stakeholders if you can't hear what they have to say, and there's not a form for it. So you also have, is removing, the accommodates the number of publics wishing to, to participate that had been listed in one of the items and has been removed. So that's no longer even a stated goal in some of this piece. So I think this needs more work before you approve it. Also, you move the, the approval authority for if there's a disagreement to a speaker violating the rules to just the board president when the previous policy states that it's, it's something the whole board would make that decision of. And I think the language being used is, is vague. The example would be if it targets a protected class, but there's not a definitional aspect of what targeting is or what a protected class is. And then at times in our society, people are being silenced if they disagree with a protected class. And that's, I don't think that's the board's intent at all, but I think you need either clarify the language or make sure it's not being left to just one person who might have a disagreement with the person speaking. We want to have discourse. We want to improve that type of communication. The other thing, you, you spoke out, or you added the reference to 4.41280, which is the weapons policy within the, the state of Washington. But you reference it without any of the exceptions that are included in there. So law enforcement responding to emergency, federal law enforcement that's at a location, state law enforcement factors. I don't think you want to have your board meetings at a place that law enforcement can't respond to if there is a problem. And so if it's just a reference to that previous law, it's not intended to increase those, or put be more stringent than the current law. I'm not exactly sure why it's, it's in there. I did notice that there were policy changes that could allow off-site meetings, remote meetings, and one of the things that is covered by that law as an exception is if it's not at the facility. So that was the reasoning and putting in there is you want, you wanted to ensure that there was a weapons policy if there was an off-site meeting. But I also think that there are other exceptions that might still be applicable if that one isn't. So that's the, that's the other aspect. I thank you for the use of the Policy 1420 of allowing me to make a public comment before an issue that's relevant to the public. I think that's, that's a good, good step in being able to have discourse. For your time.
Discussion?
Dr. Larson, one of the things that I love about our policies is they are living documents. We continue to edit them. I don't know that we're ever going to find perfect policies. Can you, can you speak to some of the reasonings behind language like making sure we don't have nunchucks in there, how some of that stuff worked its way into our policy?
Well, I, I'm going to take us back to our work session because prior to the work session, of course, there were hours and hours of work that were put into taking a look at the current policies here and what needed to be updated. That then came to us working with President Bumpus and Director Barnes, and from there coming to the board to do the hour work session as well as then having it under presentation on the board agenda. So it's certainly not without thought that this has come, come to you. So as you know, WASDA, the Washington School Directors Association, they are charged with updating policies for all school districts in the state of Washington. And with some school districts, they just adopted whatever the model policy is, straight across other districts, adjust them based on some of their in-district practices. And I'd say Monroe at this time, it leans more on adopting the model policy with fewer adjustments than I've seen some school districts make. What they do then is WASDA with their legal department, they alert us when they have updated policies or procedures and/or procedures, and then we take a look at those. With these in particular, just reminding you, what we did first is, because I'm new and Holly is new, is we just looked at them side by side to see, is this a policy 1400 that was just adopted as WASDA drafted it? And then look at their markups where they're saying you need to adjust and make these changes based on a change in a law, for example. Or if we were, probably doesn't sound good to say way off, but if ours were significantly different. And actually, there were a lot of similarities. So what we were looking at is what needs updating based on changes in, in laws and circumstances, because the pandemic obviously called out a need to look at those emergency, the emergency language there. So we took a look at, at that as well as looking at cleaning up some language to try to make it more clear. And as you know, you actually all have pointed out some things that got changed along the way. One of the things, I know there was a comment about the public comments, and it was taken out of the policy and put into the procedures because it seemed to be more appropriate there. So some things were moved between policy and procedures as well. So, so there were a number of things that we looked at in, in crafting that. So what I would say is obviously WASDA, they're the experts. We then need to see if there are tweaks that we make because Monroe School District requires some tailoring to that. And then clean things up as we go, as, as you mentioned, Director Campbell, these are living documents. So whatever you may choose to adopt today, it doesn't mean that you can't make some changes and have two more readings and adopt something new in a month. You, you have the ability to do that as often as you choose. As far as one of the other things, just trying to remember some of what came up. Sometimes, in my experience, sometimes WASDA puts absolutely everything in their policies. But keep in mind, they're having to write them for school districts that have 50 students and school districts that have 50,000 students. So they need to make sure that they, they cover what everybody might need. And sometimes they actually have language saying tailor here for your school district. So it won't, won't be perfect. When we looked at the weapons laws, for example, we could have had pages, probably. I'm trying to remember how long it was. It was long. And I, and because we referenced the RCWs, that means it is there, it just isn't spelled out every word and every weapon that is included in that. So some of it is in the reference checks. So I think, I think I hit on most of what we worked on over the last few meetings and what some questions were. So I understand why people have questions. And of course, for folks that haven't been involved in the process and are not familiar with WASDA, you know, there's a lot that goes into this to get to this point. But obviously, it's at the pleasure of the board, which it decides to do.
So one of the things I have a question on is, why is there a, individuals with disabilities who may need a modification to participate should contact the superintendent's office no later than three days before a regular meeting? What's the, do you have any thoughts on that? What's the reasoning?
Well, I, I do, I don't know what WASDA's reasoning was, but my first thought is sometimes it takes some time to actually be able to accommodate. Because, you know, certainly there's a multitude of types of disabilities. Some are easier to accommodate than others. With us publishing the agenda on Thursday, you know, given it is the weekend, I understand that as far as the comment, but it doesn't preclude folks from sending us an email so that we have some lead time to do our best to accommodate any special needs.
Further discussion?
From my experience being through the pandemic, the meetings before, during the pandemic, and the way our meetings are handled now, these are reasonable changes, and there was ones that, ones that we wanted to make. In fact, some of them, I think, are a year overdue. So the the final tweaking, you know, it's not our intent just to be extremely strict. And we always have leeway. You could have cut these people off exactly at one second after, but we, we work with the situation. It's a structure for our meeting. The, I don't know how many meetings I've been to. Maybe 100 with special meetings and emergency meetings, but it's within compliance of the RCW. We've looked at those before, the emergency meetings, the executive meetings, the topics that we can speak. We can cover special board meetings, regular board operation. So I feel confident that we've done a good job. We've talked about them in advance. We've talked about the pros and cons. And I think this is something I feel comfortable voting in, in favor of.
I don't think we're gonna have a perfect policy ever, and I would rather move forward with something that we can work with and continue to tweak as we move along. And as we find things, we can continue to fight them. Some I'm comfortable with.
So getting this agenda out on Thursday to the public, is that, are we just not ready to commit to more than 24 hours on the policy?
Well, there, you, keep in mind, the agenda goes public on Thursday, and the meeting is until Monday at 5:00. So that's from Thursday to Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, you know, what, four, four days lead time. And you know what? If, if folks are not sure if they're coming or not, you know, they can let us know so that we can be prepared as well. And I, you know, I suppose the, the thing with, you certainly could back up the agenda. That's possible. What happens when you do that is that you, you, you lose the ability to have more up-to-the-minute information, because we like to have all of the backup materials attached. As you know, once in a while, they're not, and they come in late, which doesn't give you the ability to have, you know, another day or two to go through the materials. That cramps the amount of time that you have them. You know, but it, it's not impossible to do. It just means when you back that up, there's probably materials that won't be attached to the agenda, or you'll have agenda items that carry over and are more after the fact and come up, but then are pushed out to another meeting. But things, things to think about. It just is different.
One of the things that, Dr. Larson, you've invited me in on being able to be a part of some of the midweek meetings is we're preparing, you're preparing the agenda items and things like that, is Ben, we're trying to thread the needle as well. So we can try and, we're trying to do the best we can for our community, trying to do the best we can for our board. But in the meantime with that, there are things that we can, we can, we can put an agenda item out tonight for our next meeting. But it's kind of pointless because we're gonna have to change it 15 times between now and the next meeting. And so doing that doesn't really help anyone. But at the other end of, a lot of the things that are coming in are things that we're dealing with in the moment, and in those meetings, getting ready for the next board meeting are happening on Wednesdays. And so there are things that need to have happen where Marcy's getting instructions of saying, these are information, things that we need to adjust, things that we need to add, things that we need to be aware of. And that gives our superintendent time to, for her to coordinate with her staff and get it out by the next day. So it gives her one working day in order to do that. Then on Thursday, it is published so that it's actually officially there by Friday. So we're really doing it a half a day in advance, and as far as business days. And the idea of having that then over the weekend actually gives people longer. So it's kind of hard because it's the reality of saying, how early can we actually do it and still have a legitimate agenda? Even with that, we still have to do some adjustments. The hope is that they're minor. And so I try and find that, where we find that line, and that's kind of a hard balance that we're trying to navigate.
And of course, I, you know, now that we have Zoom and record meetings, that really invites the public in, in different ways than ever before. And you had had the question, what, a week or two ago, about other languages? And, and how that works? Yeah.
Yeah, one of the things that's really cool is just seeing how we can have individuals at their home with Zoom's technology. At the beginning of the pandemic, this wasn't available, but there was some stuff that Microsoft, that PowerPoint could do in the online platform of it, where you could do, because I worked in a school district that had like, in the building I was in had 60 different languages represented. And so you could actually do streaming. And when we were doing even hybrid mode, you would teach, I would teach from my document camera, have it, a background underneath of it, and you could actually have it running with auto translation, like we have our, our closed captions here. Whoever's at home could choose to listen in the language that they needed in. So honestly, we're making it broader than we have in the past, which is really helpful. Now, does everybody have access to that technology? No, but it's at least a step in the right direction, which is helpful, a helpful thing. So.
Well, I think that we're moving in the right direction. We're starting to talk about policy and updating policy. We're having endless meetings about it and lots of We're having endless meetings about it and lots of and spending lots of hours um sifting through all of the information. Um to tailor them to Monroe's needs. And I believe that this is heading in that direction. I'm glad that it's a working document. Um and I um I'm excited to continue to include our public in a lot of this work. And so in ways to navigate, you know, we're constantly learning and growing and getting better. And I think that this is a step in the right direction. I look forward to continuing to work on our policies as we move forward. Um and again, just tailoring them to Monroe Monroe's needs. But yeah, excited to even I made me think kind of of even what it looks like for special meetings. Or um when we need an interpreter in the building, just some of those needs that I think it it made me curious about some of those things as well that we can. Continue to have conversations about. Yeah, okay. There's a motion on the table. Uh all in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed five to zero. Moving on to agenda item four point zero five. Is there a motion?
Move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve revisions to policy fourteen ten executive or closed sessions as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve reverse revisions to policy fourteen ten executive or closed sessions as presented. Discussion. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed five to zero. Moving on to agenda item four point zero six, consideration of revision to policy fourteen twenty. Proposed agenda and consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve revisions to policy fourteen twenty proposed agenda and consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve revisions to policy fourteen twenty proposed agenda and consent agenda as presented. Discussion.
Just glad that we're kind of working on cleaning up our policies that this can hopefully make our agendas a little cleaner as well. So this. Part of that work that we're continuing to revise like this.
Jeff, I'm gonna call on you really quick. Uh you're you have four point zero six on here as well. Did you want to speak to that? Okay, go ahead.
Still, both kids still same locations. All right. Um so on four point zero six, the only thing I wanted to to mention is you may want to clarify in the policy. How you just determine whether a public um comment is of of value for discussion like this. Um I ended up asking when I got in here, is there a way I can speak on on it because there is this policy in fourteen twenty? And so we're doing that right now, which I think is is great. Um but my recommendation was especially since you're cleaning up the whole consent agenda and allowing for the removal of things from the con consent agenda by by a board. That any item that's not on the consent agenda that you allow the public to put and speak on that item. And if it is on the consent agenda, it would be something that would be available for the public to make a comment on if a board member removes it from the consent uh agenda. It would just require a small change to your policy um as well as um it would allow for non uh for public comment and agenda items to be extended to the discussion. Um to be submitted prior to the point that discussion on the agenda rather than the the traditional movement. So that was just my suggestions and some things I've seen in another district um being done. So that's all.
Thank you, Jeff. Further discussion?
The majority items on the consent agenda, uh we have no choice. Their contracts we have to sign, uh payroll that's approved. Costs and invoices that have to be approved. Um really, but this is, we used to have. A superintendent consent agenda and then we had the board consent agenda. So the purpose was to have them combined and. Salary schedules, we have no choice on the membership for the WIAA. We have no choice on council payable. Uh we have no choice on Sky Valley Education Center school calendar. We would rely upon Sky Valley to make the recommendation to us. We wouldn't go. Bag it. We don't like what you're doing. Uh human resources report which are retired resignation. Uh or added so that and payroll, you know, we have to. So I understand your uh comment on that. And there's usually just some things that we just have to approve and they just need the board to sign off uh because of uh. That's how it is. We have to approve payroll. But a good point. Thank you.
For the board members and Dr. Larson, correct me if I'm wrong, our understanding with this as well, a lot of this is legal liability. These are uh because of dollar amounts and things like that. These are things we're signing off on, but they're also the routine items that we're doing in our consent agenda. And in the past, we've had items that we've had to move from consent to business so that we have time to discuss them. And that this doesn't restrict any of that. Also, we still have the ability for individuals to have public comments that they can have during the public comment section even before it's listed on the consent agenda. So I don't know that this really restricts anything. Uh it it we've just amplified it a little bit. By allowing with the board, I the the business items, but even before that, we've had individuals who do public comment on business items and consent agenda items regardless. So I don't know that we're really restricting anything this way.
Yeah, what well said. And I would just say by definition, a consent agenda is just there for you to have more efficient meetings. So for um. Reoccurring items, contracts or or minutes of the meeting, whatever it might be. Um those are the types of things by definition that go on a consent agenda only for efficiency sake. Heck, you could take all of them off and put them on business if you're you'll be here all night. Going that route. Um but it's up to you what goes on consent and what doesn't. But it should be regular recurring uh business that comes before you.
Thank you.
And one of the things as a board member, um I'll call up Dr. Larson. I like, oh, what is this about? What the heck? What the heck is this about? And do we have to sign it? And uh these agreements or these interscholastic agreements and should give me an explanation. So we do our due diligence in in uh in advance of the meeting.
Further discussion? Okay, all in favor, raise your hand. Agenda item has passed five to zero. Moving on to agenda item five point zero nine, approval of the superintendent consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items as listed and presented in the superintendent consent agenda dated May twenty second, twenty twenty three.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items as listed and presented in the superintendent consent agenda dated May twenty second, twenty twenty three. Discussion. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed five to zero. Moving on to board consent agenda six point zero three, approval of the board consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I move that for the last time that we have a separate consent agenda. That the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items as listed and presented in the board consent agenda dated May twenty second, twenty twenty three. And next meeting will have just one agenda.
Nice. A second.
There's a motion and a second. Thank you, Director Whitfield, that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items as listed and presented in the board consent agenda dated May twenty second, twenty twenty three. Discussion. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed five to zero. Moving on to agenda items seven point zero one. Board reports and or comments and or fun stories.
No fun stories this week, but I do have some I'd love to highlight. Shout out to our friend and community partner at Take the Next Step, Sarah Lundstrom. Has a um uh their first post pandemic fundraising event in three years. As they're doing that, one of our community partners, they're doing a fundraising luncheon. Uh and they are doing that to support Monroe's most vulnerable families. Uh we can contact them. We have our contact information. Take the next step. But you can also contact Sarah at sarah at ttns.org. Uh and that will be June eighth. That's a Thursday. Uh from twelve to one at Summer River Song River Event Center. So I just wanted to uh shout that out for our community partner as well as they're helping out. A lot of those students are our students and some of our most vulnerable ones. And I love that they're doing that. So I'm excited for that.
Okay, I'll go next. So a couple of things. Um just another shout out to our incredible FFA program and their plant sale with Miss Lowe that took place at the high school. I really appreciate the students there who took the time to put together two flower baskets for me based on just colors that I like. They're absolutely beautiful. And I think of our incredible students every day when I walk past them on my deck. So I just really appreciate that. Um and then to Maddie specifically who helped me out the day that I went to pick them up. She's a tenth grader at Monroe High School. She's gonna be doing Running Start next year. And when I asked her, just kind of how are things going? You know, what do you think? And she said, it's been going really, really well. And I said, well, what feedback do you have? You know, what what would you like to see different? And her one thing that she really was hoping would be different was longer lunchtimes to be able to see her friends. She said that that was one of the things that a lot of the kids were hoping for that they hadn't seen. And so I told her that I would bring those recommendations back to us here at the board for food for thought. Um really appreciate, yeah, funny, I know, really appreciate Maddie and her honesty, uh willingness to dialogue and just to be helpful. So the other thing, the baseball game, the very first state playoff baseball game Tuesday night last week, I went. I went with a um a sixteen year old who's graduating from Sky Valley early. She's an amazing young woman. But so she was my date for the evening, left the family at home. Uh it was an incredible game. Our boys did so amazing. They played their hearts out. They beat Silas uh six to one, I believe, was the final score. The turnout was amazing. It was so wonderful to see so much of the community come out in support of our students. So a huge congratulations to them um all around for making it this far for the first time in forty five years. That's a really big accomplishment. And it was so fun to be able to be a part of that. Last thing is don't forget about the powwow coming up. It is this Saturday, May twenty seventh. I'm definitely planning on being there. I cannot wait. Um I would just encourage our community to come to learn more. Uh about what a powwow is um and just broaden your horizons a little bit. So anyway, have a fabulous week, everyone. I hope we get a little bit of sunshine back.
All right. I had the pleasure of visiting Sky Valley last week. I had never been to that school before, so that was a lot of fun. I'm really interested just on a personal level on the alternative learning basis of uh. Um just exploring different ways that we can educate our children. I really like the strong, you know, hands on work woodworking, strong robotics. Um I really suggest, you know, we should be feeding in teammates to the the our district's robotics team. So hopefully, we can get that connection going. Um I really like the connection with Running Start where they very much they encourage to work with the students to get them going. Ideally with their AA while they're graduating or before they graduate from high school. That's great. And we had a good discussion. I've even talked with Sean about it, about uh building up some kind of program with the trades so we can get to. You know, alternative careers, you know, instead of just everyone needs to go to college. There's a whole wide range of fields and areas that need, you know, nice young. Uh people to get in. Um and then also, I want to echo Laura said that the art and science fair is going on tonight. So we have about fifty minutes to get over there and enjoy that. So thanks.
I went to a subagent convention this weekend, which is uh licensing agencies like myself throughout the state. So I am Joe government. I deal with government on the school side and I deal with government on the licensing side. I found out about uh a really neat thing uh in the interest of diversity, equity and inclusion. Um the new director of the Department of Licensing is an African American. It's Marcus. Blasper. Uh he started with the Department of Licensing on April first before joining us. Marcus was the director of Washington's Lottery. Prior to that, he served in leadership roles in Department of Revenue. And spent a decade working with United States Department of Energy. He began his career as an engineer with General Motors before coming to work for Washington Department of Rec of Corrections. He's from Louisiana, received his Bachelor of Science in Mechanical Engineering from Southern University in Baton Rouge. And has a master's in engineering management from Washington State University. Uh he also has completed senior executive programs at Harvard's John F Kennedy School of Government, USDA Graduate School and University of Washington. Evan's School of Public Affairs. So there's there's a balance there. Uh to let you know how it works is Department of Transportation is one of the. The major categories in the government and underneath Department of Transportation is Department of Licensing. And then that split between vehicle licensing and driver's licensing. So he is uh has that role. It's a very important role. Um and one that we are keenly aware of. Um I've met the prior. Directors and worked with them, so I look forward to working with him. Uh also at the. At the event, um they rolled out a new. Placard or new sticker that's available for veteran suicide. And that money that is purchased goes purchase goes towards suicide matters. And I thought I would read this. Basically, starting with the point that research shows every suicide that occurs. A hundred and thirty five people suffer from the effects either directly or indirectly. Meaning that suicide from veterans impact a community of two point six million people. That really struck me. It's an average of seventeen per day. Uh there's uh five hundred and forty four veterans in Washington State. Uh sixty one thousand active. Seventeen thousand nine hundred service members and a hundred and sixty two million military and veterans ma- members. Heather, Brenda and myself, I'm not sure, but others are veterans. So. Uh I just have a heart for veterans and just wanted to. Wanted to give a little uh explanation about that. And it was sunny this weekend in Wenatchee, so that was nice. Great weekend.
Um I don't have a whole lot to share. I went to visit the high school on Friday. I planned for an hour. I was there for three and a half. Uh but I think it's so much fun being able to hang out with students and get to learn more about them and and just. Quite honestly, like just ask, I just ask questions like what what are you doing this summer? Um and they're just fascinating. And I do have a list that I've had for a couple of weeks now, and I always say go bear cats. So I also need to include go cheetahs, go wild cats, go falcons, go mustangs, go timberbeast eagles, hawks. And pumas, go lions, go bear cats. It is seven ten P M. Tonight's meeting is adjourned. Thank you.